The May 4th, 2023 meeting of the Dublin City Council will be called to order. We'll begin with an invocation by Councilman Paul Griggs, followed by the pledge led by Boy Scout Anthony Snellgrove of Troop 560. Mr. Griggs.
Good morning, Father. We thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to gather here today to discuss the business of the city. We want to bless all the folks and all the citizens in Dublin, Lawrence County. We ask that you be with us and help us make the right decisions which is best for our city. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being just as one.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to have Boy Scouts with us. I know that this is part of their training for civic service, so appreciate your attendance tonight. That was Anthony Snellgrove of Troop 560. Thank you again for leading us in the pledge. We'll now start with our agenda items. The first item on tonight's agenda is approval of the April 20th, 2023 city council meeting minutes.
Excuse me, ma'am. We need to take one, take an item off the agenda, don't we?
All right. Do we have a motion to amend the agenda?
I move to amend the agenda to take item number seven off of the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor to amend the agenda by removing item number seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for that reminder. We'll now move to item number one on the agenda, which is approval of the meeting minutes. Do we have a motion regarding that?
I have a motion for approval of the minutes. Second.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Colby and a second from Councilman Griggs. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number three, which is approval of purchases over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
Um, you want to...
Excuse me. Approval of bills over $15,000.
Yeah. You've got a copy of those in your packet as well as all of the expenditures of the city since our last meeting.
All right. Do we have a motion regarding the bills over $15,000?
Make a motion.
Second.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Jones. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now we'll move to item three, which is approval of purchases over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
We have one purchase tonight. It's for the police department. It is a 2020 Chevy Tahoe. This would be a direct purchase from the Doolitle County Sheriff's Office. They have this vehicle. The police chief and the police department was able to go and test drive. It was driven by a detective down there, and they had it up for sale. And we would like to use it potentially as a K-9 unit here for the city. This would be to potentially add a K-9 unit to work at the night shift. And the price is $17,500, and staff recommends approval of this purchase, and it would be paid for with our asset forfeiture fund.
Okay. You've heard Mr. Powell's description of this item. Are there any questions for staff regarding the 2020 Chevy Tahoe? If not, is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Mascara and a second from Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. We'll now get into the meat of the agenda, which is item number four, the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex .81 acres of land. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance number 2305, annexing and incorporating into the municipality of the city of Dublin, Georgia, .81 acres, more or less, of property located at parcel number D04A068. It's also addressed as 2120 Veterans Boulevard. The proposed use is an automobile service station to be annexed and as B2 zone. This is the Jiffy Lube that is right there next to Firehouse Subs. You may not have realized it wasn't in the city limits, but maybe after tonight's meeting it will be. They are primarily asking for annexation. They currently have natural gas service with us, but would like to connect to our water and sewer, and so annexation is what we're requesting.
Okay. At this time, we will close the city council meeting and open a public hearing to receive comments either in opposition to or in support of this annexation proposal. If there's anyone who would like to speak in favor of this annexation proposal, now is the time. Anyone like to come forward to speak in favor of this annexation proposal? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this annexation proposal? All right. Having no public comments, we'll now close the public hearing and turn this matter over to council for action. Are there any council members who have questions of staff regarding this? Was this, what was the P&amp;Z Board's recommendation on it?
They recommended the annexation.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion to second, annexation. Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Jones and a second from Councilman Brown. We'll now, if there's no discussion on the motion, we'll now call the roll. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilwoman Godfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Mascara.
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
All right. Well, congratulations to the Jiffy Lube and welcome to the city.
From humble beginnings with a desire to serve the Dudley community, Bank of Dudley has grown to five locations, serving Lawrence, Twigs, and surrounding counties. Serving our community since 1905, the Bank of Dudley is looking forward to its second century of community banking. Drop in today to any of our five locations: Jeffersonville, Dudley, East Dublin, Veterans Boulevard, and downtown Dublin. Bank of Dudley, member FDIC and an equal housing lender.
Since 1916, Gravely has been designed, engineered, and made right here in the USA. Whether you prefer gas or electric, every Gravely has been forged with the commercial landscaper in mind. So they're not only built to last, but to also keep you riding comfortably from dawn to dusk. So ask yourself, are you ready to graduate to a Gravely?
Hey, I'm TJ Schuler with Myers Equipment Supply. Come see us for all your sales and service needs.
We'll now move to item number five, which is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to rezone .33 acres. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance number 2306, a zoning map amendment. It's an amendment to the official zoning map of the city of Dublin, Georgia, as previously amended for the purpose of rezoning .33 acres, more or less, of property located at parcel D10D096, Dublin, Georgia, from R1, which is single-family residential, to H1, Bellevue Avenue Historic District. The proposed use is parking. And this ordinance actually includes a condition that the parking lot layout be revised to include a vegetation buffer zoning provision that the buffer would consist of a planted hedge that is, or similar planted material that is at least five feet deep and eight feet in height.
All right. Thank you for the review of that ordinance. At this time, we will close our city council meeting and open a public hearing to receive public comments regarding this rezoning proposal. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this proposal? All right. If you'd like to come forward, please. And we just need to know your name, where you live, and whether you're speaking in opposition or in favor.
Okay. Thank you, pity thing. I'm Nancy Harrison, and I own a home that is next to the lot that Nichols and Colby wants to rezone from residential to H1. And right now, they have just a few cars parked over there. It's on a grass lot. And I'll be glad to pass these pictures around later. But what they're planning to do is resurface this area because they're going to add on to the back of their building and lose some of the parking that's behind their building. And so all the cars will be moved back over here next to me, and I live right there. And, you know, like I said, right now, there's probably just a few cars there because most of the time half that lot is either underwater or it's too muddy to park them. But I imagine it will be full, especially during tax season. So anyway, I, like I said, I live right next door, and again, I will pass this around. But this is the side of my house. This is like the drainpipe right here. And it's only about 12 feet between my home and the property line. So I would like to ask for much more than a five-foot buffer to keep that neighborhood quiet and from looking so commercial. And then when you come in from, if you turn off Stonewall and come into Cottage Walk, there is a, there is a fence right now that they have around this lot. And then there's a gate right in the middle of it. And I'm hoping that you will be glad to put a buffer zone along either side of the fence. Again, because there's a house here and one behind it, and of course, I'm right up here, again, to keep the, to protect the neighborhood and to keep it from looking so commercial. So I'd be glad to give this to you all and let you pass it around. I just want to thank you in advance for protecting my home and my neighborhood there.
Do we, do any council members have questions they'd like to ask?
Mr. Matt, did you, did you see the plan that they have here on that?
No, I called over there, and they haven't given the, I mean, that they didn't have one.
So if you can orient yourself, you know what's happening there? Those are eight, those are the, they're set.
Oh, okay. They must have just submitted this. Okay. Well, that looks like just one row of trees, because I'm, I live right on that side. I think we should have one in that. Because, yeah, definitely, because my house is very, very close to that property lot. And I would like to see something much greater than just that five foot or anything.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for taking the time to come this evening and provide your comments. All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to this rezoning proposal? Yes, please come forward.
Jenny Nash, I'm here with representing Nichols, Colley Associates. And I did speak with Ms. Harrison last week. I just want to clarify, our intent is not to commercialize the look of it at all. We like the natural landscape of our back area. We're going to lose, we probably have about five or six cars that park where we're going to build a building, and that's kind of what we want to recover. We do have parking all along the front side of that building. You can see where the original is, along the creek. So we want to resurface it, not really build a commercial-looking lot, because we do have people going through there, and it is a swamp. So that's kind of the main intent is the rezoning is basically just so we can put gravel. And we are willing to do the buffer and everything to keep the natural look. I understand the grass lot is prettier, but we have all of our employees trekking through mud every day when it rains. So that's it.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, let's see if we have any questions.
I was just going to ask, is it still the intention to enter and exit from the cottage walk? Is that why there's a gap? Or, because it looks like there's parking spaces there. But then it also looks like it's open for the gates to open and close.
No, yeah, we're not going to have spaces where the gate opens.
So the gate will still be used as the entrance and exit? Okay. I wanted to clarify that, because I wasn't sure in the pre-council meeting.
Yeah, excuse me, Cal Branding from the Nichols, Colley. But right, the gate, which was originally put up just to cut down the, before that gate was there, there was traffic going in and out, you know, just from, from Stonewall. It was just used as almost like a, a, a tree. And so we put the gate up. But our intention is not that, we have people that do go out of there, because you can, if you live back that way or whatnot, you can. But, but our intention is not for the, for the front office traffic or whatnot that normally comes in off 1300 Bellevue, you know, comes in off Bellevue. Nothing's going to change there or whatnot. You know, we're not trying to make this the main entrance, but we do plan to leave the gate just for convenience or whatnot.
And this is for a gravel parking lot? Is that what you're saying?
Right. Are we in pressure run, something like that?
Yes.
I have a question about just the, the water control, you know, in protection of the neighboring properties, you know, are y'all going to be able to move that water, you know, just where it's running back towards the creek and not towards?
Yeah, that's, that's the whole reason for this, is to get the water out of, if, if the water didn't stay in our lot, we would be perfectly fine with it being grass, because it does look, you know, it is prettier being grass. But I believe the whole, the whole deal is to get the water out of our lot, not back on the reservoirs that were into Chamber Creek or whatever it's called.
Other questions? Did you have a, you've heard the, the neighbor who's requested a wider buffer zone. Do you have any thoughts on a wider?
We're going to do everything that we can do to accommodate, you know, to, to accommodate their concerns, because, I mean, obviously, they're valid. And so we're going to, you know, we're going to do that if it, if it takes more trees or whatnot to, to do that, you know, then fine. You know, we'll, we'll do whatever we need to accommodate. Because what we really need, what our end goal is, is just to end up with a handful more parking places. You know, it may be a few more, because hopefully, as we add this ring to our building, hopefully, we'll be, you know, creating more new homes and, you know, and things like that, too.
Other questions? Any other questions? All right. Thank you for your comments this evening.
I'm pushing for us. The, it's a five foot?
Five foot, eight foot tall.
Yeah, the, the current, the current ordinance reads a buffer consisting of a hedge or similar planted material to a depth of five feet and a height of eight feet. All right. Any other public comments this evening? Anyone want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this proposed rezoning? This is your opportunity. Is there anybody else? Okay. If there are no other comments, we will close the public hearing and turn this matter over to council for action. Do we have a motion? After motion, we'll have comments. If there is a motion.
Make a motion for approval.
We have a motion for approval from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Godfrey. Okay. Do we have any comments on the motion? Anybody want to make any comments? All right. If there are no comments from council members, then will Madam Clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilwoman Godfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Mascara.
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I know that our planning and zoning department will be working with you on the buffer to make sure that that meets the requirements of the new ordinance.
Spring is here, and it's the perfect time to buy or sell your home or property, and great deals are popping up all over. So call agents Brian Howell, Charlene Lamp, Adam White, David Deves, Jennifer Bradley, Mark Bateman, Jay Brantley, Jim Jarrett, Rena Dufferly, Yvonne Robertson, or broker George Durden today. And get the help you need when it comes to buying or selling your home or property. Log on to c21dublin.com. Call us at 272-1535, or stop by 1700 Veterans Boulevard in Dublin. Deal with the number one realty company in Dublin and Lawrence County, Century 21 Durden Carnegie Broker, George Durden. Congratulations to the class of 2023 from Farmers State Bank. Life is filled with milestones. And Farmers State Bank would like to take this opportunity to salute all the graduates this year. Your hard work and determination is commendable, and everyone at Farmers State Bank would like to recognize the senior class of 2023. Farmers State Bank looks forward to building relationships and helping you reach the next milestone in your life. Remember, your future is as easy as FSB. Farmers State Bank with locations in Dublin and Cadwell. Member FDIC and an equal housing lender.
All right. Thank you for your comments this evening. We'll now move to item number six, which is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the alcohol ordinance. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance number 2307, an ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to amend section 4-24 distance requirements of Article 1 of Chapter 4, which is alcoholic beverages, beverages of the city of Dublin code ordinances to reduce distance requirements for alcohol license applicants, to repeal conflicting ordinances to provide adoption and effective dates, and for other lawful purposes. This ordinance came to be, there are some very particular provisions in state law with regard to how far, say, a package sale store has to be from a college campus versus a school versus a housing authority versus a rehab facility. And then the same thing's true for those alcohol licenses that are issued for buy-to-drink for consumption on the premises. There's all different kinds of rules there. And our local ordinance, in some ways, was enforceable and in some ways was not the way it's currently written. So this proposed ordinance amendment will get us in compliance with or track state law. The only exception to that will be for a package sale of beer and wine to college campuses will be 75 yards as opposed to 100 yards.
Okay. That is the second reading of the ordinance. We will now close our city council meeting and open a public hearing to receive public comments regarding this proposed ordinance. Do we have any one that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or in opposition to this proposed ordinance? This is the time for public comment on this. All right. Please state your name, and if you're speaking in favor or in opposition, make the comments.
Opposition, Chris Holliday.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to come forth and, as I said before, you know, in, in our neighborhoods, we're looking to make them safer and beautified and family-oriented. So when making these decisions, I hope, you know, that we're taking into consideration that we're, you know, we're still having projects that are being in the area to make them safer and beautify them. At that close of a sale, we've already ran into problems in certain areas where there's setup, there's holdup, there's the, the areas are turning more into seating areas and parking areas instead of a business. And I understand that businesses, you know, are coming into the area and, and want to flourish. But, you know, coming into the areas, you understand that there are more children in the area, there are, there are more community activity going on in the area. So I just hope that, you know, the consideration is taken. That's, that's just not, for me, not enough space for those plans to go. We have to, you know, understand that their, their children are going to be in the areas. And I understand that, you know, elderly people and young people are going to make decisions. And we can't control that, but we can't control what's going to be safer for our communities. So I'm, you know, I'm against it. I oppose against that. And I just feel like that's just too close to an area of family, housing authority, as well as being a community center getting ready to come into that area, as well as a gym being in that area. So I hope you all are taking into consideration, we already have enough traffic at the park area where people are sitting up and things are happening, getting ready to be summer time. So I just feel like that's just contributing to that area having, again, that same type of environment. I'm just not even, you know, I, I, I'm against it. And I feel like as, you know, a family, a mother, a community leader, doing things in the community, and that of the sale right there at the front door of what's going on with these kids is just too close.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Miss Holliday. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor or in opposition?
I'd like the council to explain. Is this ordinance is just for one particular business that y'all doing, or is this ordinance for y'all to come in compliance with state?
Just as a matter of, do you have the, this would change, the only thing that this would be different from state law would be reduction in the distance from college campuses for the package sale. State law has a 100-yard default, and this would change that locally to 75 yards.
Well, about the distances from a college or, or just being in a community, beer and wine is sold to adults. It's not sold to children or anything like that. So I don't see what's, what the big deal would be about talking about being in a community, long as of alcohol, and the person that's selling alcohol is going by the state law and not selling to a children. I mean, I don't see what's the big deal about talking about the community, talking about a particular community in which it's being talked about, because the community that I myself is working on. And I would never do anything in that community or put anything there that would put the children or anybody else in jeopardy.
And I know who you are, but we got to have your name for the record.
My name is Brenda Chang.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments there? All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come and speak in favor of or in opposition to this proposed ordinance? This is the public hearing, so this is your opportunity to make comments. If there are no other comments, we will close the public hearing and turn this matter over to council for action.
Make a motion for approval.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Jones and a second from Councilman Mascara. Is there any discussion among council regarding this motion?
I wanted to clarify, this doesn't reduce only the college campus, but it does also reduce the distance requirement for beer and wine to schools.
It does to, from 200 yards to 100 yards.
And we're defining the school as a school that teach, they start what, pre-K, teach, no, teaching, um, teaching pre-K up to twelfth, up to college, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yeah, the, I think the language in the, in the state law that defines schools, courses and curriculum that's taught in common schools is the way it's worded. And the reason for that, Councilwoman Godfrey, is to make it a uniform. That would, that would have been the outlier, the only thing that had 200 yards in the ordinance. As opposed to everything else, it's 100 yards.
But this, you're saying the state is 200, and is that what?
That is, that's correct.
Actually, Mr. Groover, City Attorney, I know that your office worked on this. Can you maybe just kind of give us some background of state law versus local law as it relates to that?
I have a flowchart I'll be able to do, but it's not complicated. But here's the kind of bottom line. State law sets both for liquor and beer and wine, still period of beer and wine. You can't vary it from the alcohol treatment center, which is 100 yards, so that's the same. You can't vary it from the housing authority, that's the same, dictated by state law. And package stores are dictated by state law. Pretty much everything else is within the discretion of the city council. So this divided up, distilled in wine and beer sales, package stores versus C stores or whatever, and to make it more consistent with state law. So to, to the mayor's point, the 100 yards of church property remains the same on both. The only thing that really changed is there was 100 yards went down to 70,000 for college campuses for license for retail, that's like a C store. That's only for beer and wine, not for package store. And then the, also only people dealing in wine, they went out to 200, 100 for school building, school. The package store stays at 200, that's still different. But that's, that was, those are the big names. And then restaurants in, in that district, which y'all had before, you know, totally.
So we're clarifying the difference between a mini store and like a package store.
That's right. Because before, it was all together. So what we did is, because their all rules were different, and state law was split them up between liquor sales together on package store versus beer and wine. That was one of the measures.
And I just want to make sure, under the, this proposal would make it more consistent with state law in that there's going to be a category for restaurants, a category for package stores, or in a pack, a category for C stores that only do beer and wine, but no, but no.
And before, it was all in one section.
Are there, are there other questions? Okay. Any other comments from council members? This is council members' opportunities to make any comments regarding this motion. If there are no other comments from council members, then Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilwoman Godfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Mascara.
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
Okay. Thank you for that information, Mr. Groover.
You dreamed about the perfect house, a place to call your own, and a place to not only stretch out, but to grow. Auto owners protect your house because to you, it's home. That simple human sense.
Ask Currie Maffet Insurance in Dublin if auto owners make sense for you.
Happy to help, man. I was just hoping to talk to myself anyway.
First Lawrence Bank invites you to experience banking at its best. Whether you have personal or business needs, we're a full-service bank, big enough to handle all of your banking needs, and small enough to provide you with that personal touch you've gone to expect from a community bank like First Lawrence Bank. touch you've gone to expect from a community bank like First Lawrence Bank. Looking forward to your future, that's First Lawrence Bank in Dublin and Dexter, member FDIC.
We'll now move to item number, item number seven was removed from the agenda for additional time for staff to work on, so we moved to item number eight on the agenda, which is discussion and action on a resolution with Pioneer Disposal Solutions Contract. Ms. Powell.
This is Resolution twenty-three thirteen, a resolution by the Mayor of Council of the City of Dublin, ordered to approve and accept in terms of an agreement with Pioneer Disposal Solutions LLC to lease certain proportions of city properties to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver the same, set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. We were approached by Pioneer Disposal Solutions to lease some property on a temporary basis down by our waste treatment plant off of Pennington Road to allow them to set up a temporary site to take in the, what's pumped from grease traps basically in town and process that there at that location to remove the, separate out the good stuff, I don't know all the technical terms, but separate out the good grease that they can use for creating potential other uses for. And then they would need also a sewer connection there to discharge the liquids that come off of that into our sewer system. Now, all this stuff is coming in our sewer system from restaurants already. This would actually alleviate the wear and tear, you know, if this gets going good, of these grease traps around town on our sewer system. So we've got this lease agreement set up and I think it'll be a good project for them to be able to start on a trial basis. It's for initially a year with a option to renew and staff recommend that the council approve it. And I know Mark Loffin's here to speak if council has any additional questions from what we discussed in pre-council.
Okay, so thank you for that explanation. At pre-council, representatives from Pioneer Disposal answered several questions from council members. You know, I think one of the questions that Councilman Godfrey asked that probably a lot of citizens may wonder is, is there, will this produce smells or odors?
Like dog from.
Right, and Pioneer Disposal reps have indicated that this process does not produce additional odors and that there should be no impact to the neighborhood that's, that's back there from additional odors. And I know that Councilman Mascara had comments regarding how helpful this process will be for restaurants. I don't know if you want to make any additional comments at this time. Okay, all right, so if we have, if we have, no, go ahead.
Also, they shared that it would create at least ten jobs in the city and then if they stay a little longer, maybe twenty jobs.
All right, so are there any more questions from council members? Any more comments on this? If not, we'll have a motion.
To approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Councilman Mascara. Do we have a second? We have a second from Councilman Jones. Any comments? If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we'll now move to item number nine on the agenda, which is a, an agreement for a fourteen-day free trial. Mr. Powell.
Yep, this is a contract that is for a fourteen-day free trial of a data, sorry, data gathering service with TransUnion. It's actually TLO is what it's called, but it's basically, they collect public information that's readily available on different public sites and different sources and compile that together to assist, the GBI currently uses this to assist in their criminal investigations and the police department would like to utilize it and see if it will work for them as well and maybe possibly be something we bring back to council to approve with a longer-term contract with, you know, we pay a fee for that. So we'd ask for council to approve this fourteen-day free trial agreement.
Okay, do we have any questions for staff regarding this agreement? If not, do we have a motion?
I should have approved.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Colby and a second from Councilman Griggs. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number ten, which is board appointments. This is, the Historic Review Board has been without a member for a few months now. Under our local Historic Review Board ordinance, the Downtown Development Authority has the authority to designate a member to that board. I've received information from Linda Berry, who's the executive director, that that board has designated board member Jack Walker for that position. So I'd ask the clerk to place Mr. Walker's name on the Historic Review Board. I do not believe under our ordinance that that requires any further action of council. We'll now move to item number eleven of the agenda, which is citizens' comments. Again, just to remind everyone, we'd love to have citizens' comments. Whenever you begin your comments, please state your name and where you live and the clerk will set a timer for three minutes and we'll welcome any comments. All right, okay, no problem. And just as a reminder, this is a, this is a, not a time for questions, but time for comments.
And I know I'm going to have three minutes, so. I'm trying to make it quick. I'm really sure I'm going to fail tonight. It's not a fair decision. I'm going to have to.
That's why I'm here. We can start with a flash.
All right. I'm starting. Yes. I'm south.
Your time is up. Go ahead.
I'm south coming to Donnarumma. I stay at six oh three Hudson Drive here in Dublin. I first started off with the mother's topical Bible. A good listener as a mother, a wise man will hear and will increase learning and a man of understanding shall attain unto wise counsel. To understand a proverb and interpretation of words to the wise and a dark sin, the fear of the Lord is the beginning of knowledge for fools despise wisdom and instruction. My son, hear the instruction of the Father and forsake not the law of your life, my father and my mother. Okay. Unity Point. I used to be a school teacher as a matter of fact, so you know what this week is, National Teachers Day, okay? Unity Point. This is a flash and light and caution proposal to be located at Martin Luther King's Avenue Drive and Hudson Street. As you can see, we have a crosswalk example here. That is because at this intersection, Paula's Fried Chicken and South Side favorite runs to my serving dealer to all who travel down the highway. Now, if you look in a very corner, you'll see a set of towers there. I came to Dublin about sixteen years ago because of United States Armed, I'm a Department of Armed and Defense. And I walked from up here on Highway Eight because I'm wanting finance for home-cooked food. And someone said, just keep smelling your fine Paula's Chicken. So I found Paula's Chicken, that was sixteen years ago. As you can see on that corner, several people have tried to come from what's called South Side to cross over to get chicken at Paula's Chicken and have been killed. Those killers designate the death of several people who've been doing that. So my proposal is that we can possibly put a crosswalk and a flash and light right there across from Unity Point. Unity Point is something that you all decided to do and I think that would be a great idea to have a crosswalk and a flash and light. So for those who come to Unity Point and those who want to go to Paula's, we can stay across from this street. Respectfully submitted by concerned citizens, Mrs. Jacqueline Denise Dunbar, if you'll keep Hudson Drive, Dublin, Georgia. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that comment. Ms. Wright, I think I have your copy here.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Wayne Kemp's Dublin Auto Sales reminds you to put your tax return to work today. If you're in the market for affordable transportation, come on down and see Wayne Kemp at Dublin Auto Sales. Getting to work, school, or around town every day requires dependable transportation, and that's what you'll find at Wayne Kemp's Dublin Auto Sales. So put that tax return to work for you this year. We offer bank rate and in-house financing, so credit is never a problem. Come in today and see TJ, Trey, Alan, Brett, or any of the friendly staff at Wayne Kemp's Dublin Auto Sales, where good deals and good people meet. Call four seven eight two seven five twenty ten, log onto dublinautosalesga.com, or stop by and see us at six oh six East Jackson Street in Dublin. That's Wayne Kemp's Dublin Auto Sales.
All right, boys, if you want to go to college, you have to clear out another one of these. What if we told you there was a better way to save for your kid's college than pickle jars? Morris Bank's Savings Builder Account and Mula makes saving for your kid's college easier than ever. All you have to do is connect the account to your debit card, where it automatically rounds up your purchases to the nearest dollar, depositing that spare change into a Mula account, where it will grow into a nice little nest egg for whatever your kids have their sights set on.
Are there any other citizens who would like to make public comments this evening?
Yes, please. I just want to come first to say thank you for the team hub event. It was awesome. It was a perfect gesture of appreciation. It says that you did an awesome job, you and your team, I over love it and the name. It was very informational, especially for new callers that are coming on your committee. I thought that was the perfect way for the city to get us on board as to the things that we need to do when we're on these boards, other members that are on these boards and, you know, giving us a face and a magnet that to go to for some of these committees, because there are several committees that are here in the city of Dublin that are awesome and your citizens need to know about who to go to when it comes to these committees. So I over love that and thank you for that. The other thing is, Ms. Tucker.
Thank you so much for your suggestion for crossing over to Unity Point. I'm in awe of that. I over love the suggestion, not only just for the restaurant that's there, but also as she said, you know, you never know, families can utilize that area and want to go over and get something to eat and we've got to dodge the traffic. So I hope you all are really thinking about it. I think that's an awesome gesture, um, of her. The other thing is, you know, I understand the decision that you all made today. Please do not think that I don't understand the decision that was made today when it comes to the ordinance that you had to approve. However, I still stand by the fact that, you know, that area is flourishing when it comes to what we're bringing for our youth and adults. I'm not just here for the youth, I'm here for family. So I understand the decision that you all had to make. However, again, we're putting things in the area for families and they need to be positive and things that are going to make the area grow and put life back into the community. We already have dead items in the community that are not building on the community, so that's why I'm very passionate about the things that are coming into the area because we need growth. We need other business opportunities that want to come over in the area, not just to, again, kill the area, but also to build up the area. So thank you and again, I do understand your reason for making this decision.
Ms. Holiday, are there any other citizens who'd like to make comments this evening? Thank you.
I'm Paula Norton. I am a proud X generation Georgia native and I realize this is time for comments, but I just have a couple of questions that I would like to throw out before I begin my comments. What state do we live in? This is a tough question, may I have an answer? Are you proud of this state? Obviously, we can answer any of those. You are aware that you do have the right to pledge the state flag. I've been to several council meetings and you pledge the federal flag, you have the state flag at least behind your head, but you don't pledge, ignore it. You are aware that under the U.S. Constitution, the state actually takes precedence over the federal in most instances, right? It's a concept called states' rights, by which the states gave the federal government only those powers need to manage national security, interstate commerce, and the like. Something our bloated, overreaching, and quite frankly, unconstitutional D.C. government and its malignant horde of unelected and unconstitutional bureaucrats seem to have forgotten. So when you pledge only the federal flag, you're in effect giving tacit permission to that same bloated, overreaching, and unconstitutional federal government to continue ignoring the Constitution by traveling upon the state's rights. I would call upon this body to begin pledging the state flag as well as the federal flag. And if you can't do that, maybe you need to stop pledging the federal flag or leave the state that you seem to have no pride in or allegiance to. Thank you.
All right, thank you for those comments. Does anyone else have a comment this evening? Any other citizens' comments this evening? Hey, good afternoon.
My name is Robin Dunne Williams. I live at twelve oh three, I mean, twelve oh three Calus Watson Street in Dublin, Georgia. It's the first time I ever been to one of these, it's kind of funny, I'm a little bit nervous. I do have a little speech to tell there is, but you not understanding, I'll be happy to speak myself. I believe it's in the holidays. I live on the five side and we trying to uplift our community. Like she say, you know, there are a lot of great things going on there. We have family over there, we have children over there, we have good health. My concern is that there is from the west, from the five side. We have a situation where we have a lot of law dogs running around. I'm talking about deer to the dog. Right here, I was able to walk my community and enjoy my community. I would walk and pick up trash because I'm about beautifying where I live. We also have a lot of problems with overgrowth and younger lots. I have addressed that before because not only that, it breeds a negative effect on the community. And then we have our roads over there that need to be repaired. A lot of it came from illegal vehicles that play my truck. I look at Dublin, it's my home place and five side is the place where a lot of us grew up at. And those who decide to come back, we want it to be positive and not negative. So again, I want to thank you all for your time. I appreciate everything you do. I'm looking at Dublin, I'm looking at all the beautifications throughout there, but please do not make the five side and I hope it don't affect anybody. The left child of Dublin, again, thank you for your time. My name is Robin Dunne and keep up the good work. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas Williams. Anyone else like to make comments this evening? Any other citizens' comments this evening?
I'm Betty Hall. I've been a member here since 2015 and I enjoy it. And I started because I had retired for a few years gaining weight, got an invitation to come to the aerobics class and I came and I've been here ever since. And the workout, the people are nice, I mean, it's just like a family. I've been here going on eight years and I come almost every day. And I invite you to come, you know, if you want to work out, get your health better, and just meet some wonderful people. I just think you will enjoy it. I just think you will enjoy it.
Hi, I'm Tom Dominy, Dublinway Nelson Company. We're a full-service wholesaler specializing in plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products. We are committed to building long-term relationships with our customers by earning your business every day. With a staff that collectively offers more than fifty years of expertise, our team knows your industry. We're able to answer your questions and are ready to help you get the parts and equipment you need. At Dublinway Nelson, our goal is long-term success of your business. We achieve that goal with a simple commitment, doing things right, one customer at a time. Our showroom is complete with the latest styles and fixtures. Stop by and see us at 507 Airport Road, or give us a call at 478-272-3585, at Dublinway Nelson.
If there are no other citizens' comments, we'll now be time for staff and council comments. Mr. Grover, do you have anything that you'd like to say this evening?
Yes.
All right. Madam Clerk, any comments this evening?
No comments.
All right, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank everybody for being here tonight, to take all the comments that were mentioned, and they all be taken in due course, and thank you for voicing your opinions. Also, today's National Day of Prayer, we all have a lot to be thankful for, let's remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank everyone for coming out, expressing their opinion about our neighborhoods, and we do have a lot to be proud of, and we are trying to uplift and do a lot in Southside. And there are a lot going on at the Oak Corner, at the, well, at the Oak Corner Community Center that's been going on, and we want to support it, we got to come out and support. And we did a movie night, been doing movie night for the last four months, children need to come out, I mean, we say we want to support and be supportive of their, we come out and support the movie night, they've got a lot of activities coming up in this month, in the month of June, we want to support, we need to support. So let's not just talk about, we want to be supportive of things, and we're not coming out to support the events that's been thrown at these things right now, I think they have every, every Tuesday morning, you have a Bible study going on, and you have a line dance class going on, so you have things going on in Southside that's positive that's going on, but we need to come out and support. The key word is support. And Ms. Robin, you have talked with me about those issues, and I'm glad you came, I told you to come and express, I did, I did, I did pass on your concerns, and I'm glad you did come and reemphasize what you, what, what, what has been said, so thank you for coming out and expressing, expressing that, but if we going to support, let's support it all, the things I've been, have been going on positive there, and still are, they got a lot of stuff coming on in the month of June also, and July, so let's go, if we're going to be positive and support for youth and adults, let's get your youth out there and your adults, and encourage them to come out there and support it. Thank you.
All right, thank you for those comments, Mr. Jones. Councilman Godfrey.
No comments.
All right, thank you, Councilman Colby.
I just want to express my appreciation to Ms. Robin for coming out and sharing the information about our neighborhood. It's so important to be engaged in this process. You're a citizen of Dublin, and we need to hear your voice, and so thank you for coming and telling us about those issues, about, especially about the overgrown lot. I think we are working hand-in-hand with the county to continue to address the straggle issue. You need to be out there and enjoying the parks and the sidewalks, and we appreciate you picking up. I agree, we just need to stay positive, we have so many wonderful things that are happening, get out and find a way to beautify, find, find a way to make Dublin a better place to live in, so I appreciate each of you being here and taking the time out of your busy schedules to prioritize Dublin in its prime.
All right, thank you for those comments. Councilman Griggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everybody for coming, and especially those, thanks for your comments at the end here, and have a safe weekend.
Thank you. Councilman Mascara.
I just want to relate what everybody was, has already said, without you all coming out and letting us hear what you have to say, and what you like and don't like, we can't, we have to make decisions without your input, so this is the forum, as everybody said, supporting your town is using your voice, it's your right, it's a platform to do that, and I do like to see businesses making improvements. When we do that, I think often the neighborhoods, those businesses that are improving, improve with the business, and sometimes things that you don't think are going to be beneficial wind up being a gem and spur other growth, so. I remember when I drove to Dublin in two thousand and three for the first time, we boarded up buildings on Jackson Street, and I asked my wife now where we were going, and she assured me that it got prettier as we went along, so fast forward twenty, now we at the Melvuda, it's pretty, so fast forward twenty years later, that part of town's thriving, and it took people taking chances when people didn't want them to do it, and I appreciate all the business owners in town, they're providing jobs, and they're improving their community.
All right, thank you for those comments. Mr. Powell.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, the comments about the crosswalk for, right there across from Paul's and at Union to Point, just to let you know, we've been working with the border department of transportation about a, what they call a quick response project, and they are sending up to Atlanta to see if they can get funding to remove some of the on-street parking that's there in front of Paul's, and along that corridor, to add a center turning lane, to help with that and do some striping there. When we did the statistics and studies of the traffic accidents that have occurred right there at Hudson, it was caused by a lack of vision, is what we think was attributable to a lot of those, when you're right there, especially coming from Paul's, if you're trying to turn because of the way nineteen curves, it's very difficult, so that's underway now, and I believe eventually the plan is to close Gray Street from having access to nineteen right there. So hopefully, if that gets funded and GDOT's able to do it, that's GDOT State right, right away right there, so hopefully they'll be able to do that, but we'll, thank you for submitting that request, and we've got a traffic calming committee here at the city hall with staff, and so I will make sure they're aware of that request, and we're always looking for ways to make things safer for the pedestrians in town in particular, so thank you for that.
Okay, just a couple of quick comments. One, I want to thank Anthony Snellgrove again with the Boy Scouts for coming tonight and helping with the pledge. Also, the National Day of Prayer, we'll be having their second meeting, the first was at lunch today, the second is at seven o'clock at Market on Madison, just right here in downtown Dublin, so hopefully, anybody that was not able to attend the noon meeting can attend the seven o'clock meeting. If there's no other comments, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.